We all set?
Yep.
Let's call a special meeting of the Acton School Committee to order June 16th, 2015, at 5:18. And we'll start with a salute to the flag. Flags over the air. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We just have two items on our agenda tonight. Comments from the public and our transportation bid. Those are the two things. So we'll start with comments from the public. Anybody has something to say?
I'll go first.
Okay.
Ian Spalding, just here because I'm kind of disappointed in how the preschool program came about and how it turned out. My daughter was rejected because of the lottery. My wife Mindy, she took her daughter to BAM every Tuesday and Thursday, which was supposed to be the preschool enrollment, well, not enrollment, but you know, get them into the school, get them familiar, you know, so they're not scared, all this. And she was very dedicated with bringing her every Tuesday and Thursday. I know that was low income first, which, you know, I'm still not happy with that either. I mean, I don't know how you guys are going about verifying that everyone, you know, the first six or how many were automatically chosen, how you're verifying that they're low income. I mean, I could have circled, you know, that I was low income. I mean, how are you going about that?
Is there anything else?
Yeah.
I mean...
Other people might want to speak.
Yes.
Yeah, and I think my concern was more along the lines of, I know there were kids coming in that got accepted to the preschool program that are currently in programs like childcare or preschool program elsewhere, whereas my son is not, and he does currently receive services through an IEP. And one of them, we have to, if we were gonna give him OT, he would have to drive to Portland to get those services. So I was hopeful that his, even having an IEP, might be able to help. And maybe the school would have taken into consideration kids that do receive services. Because once they're three years old, they're no longer brought to the home, you have to transport them somewhere. And my husband and I both work full-time, so that's not really an option for us. And also my concerns around, like you said, the income verification. It was, it was just something in the circle on there. It wasn't, we weren't asked for any, like, verification of what we actually made and that kind of thing.
And there's another question.
Yep. Who are you guys, anyway? Who are you?
I'm a superintendent.
A superintendent, alright.
I'm Judy Shane, chairman of the school committee.
Jeanette Perez.
Mary Stan.
Diana Pettis.
And we have one other member.
I'm sorry. Could you introduce yourself as well?
Yeah, yeah, I'm James Kittredge. I just have a little something I just wrote, just so you guys could hear me out.
Yeah.
Stand up, you wanna see me? Alright, my name is James Kittredge. I'm the father of two boys who will be going through this school. I'm disappointed on the way that I have introduced, I've been introduced to this school. I have a three-year-old son that's being segregated before he's even entered into the school system. It's pretty concerning. The seven kids that did not make it into the pre-K are gonna be outcast and a step behind the other students. They won't know the routine of the school day like the other sixteen kids, and they won't be forming the friendships that they had, the other ones have. I thought when I voted yes on the school budget, which was including the pre-K budget, that all the kids would be accommodated. After reading the minutes from the pre-K committee, that's what they thought also. Having kids qualify based on income isn't right. This is not a private school, this is a public school. Public schools do not segregate for families that make more or less money. Why the school hiring a full-time teacher for a full-day pre-K class is wasting money? Because at some point, it would change from, into a glorified babysitter. The attention span of four-year-olds cannot be more than three hours. The reason why parents, the reason why parents wanted a five-day, full-day pre-K is to make it easier on the parents, but it doesn't mean it's always the best thing for the kids. If the days were split up and there was twenty-three kids that could be accommodated, that's, that's what should happen. If I had a set of twins, like the principal Tricia, and they went into a lottery, one kid made it and one kid didn't, what would you do? Wasn't really thought about. Doesn't seem like a very good idea if that happens. One kid gets to be ahead of the other, what do you do? Hold them both back? Wasn't really thought about. Helping twenty-three kids a hundred percent, a little bit, is a hundred percent better than helping sixteen kids a lot. And thank you for my time, and I'd just like some answers to my concerns.
Do you wanna speak?
Can I say something?
Yep.
Thank you, Paul, for your comments.
Thank you very much. And we do hear where you're coming from.
I was a committee member on the preschool committee when we first met. So our first meeting, we said, "We want to meet all preschool student needs." And I'm upset, as a school committee member, that it didn't, it was a surprise to me that, and I said it at the school committee meeting last week, the regular school committee meeting, that I asked the principal, "How did this come about?" And she said, "Well, the state suggested we do this, and if you have more than the sixteen that a teacher's allowed to teach." And I said, "We don't have to do what the state says." It was a suggestion. But I think, you know, you put your heads together and we could figure this out. There are some people who want full-time, we could probably give it to them. But I already heard today that at least two parents are like, you know, "I got in for the full day, I only wanna bring my kids two or three days." So now, you know, a person is getting in who's only gonna drop their kid off twice. So I'm concerned with that. Another parent didn't have proof of residency, so I hear that, you know, instead of sixteen, there's fifteen, so the first on the waiting list would get in. So it's even fewer kids. And then I bet if we even checked for the income verification, I'd be worried that people just circled. I saw the form, and I said, "How are they gonna check that?" So it all came to, and I only saw the form because my grandson's mother got the form. I didn't. I'm on the preschool committee, and I didn't even get the form. So I'm very concerned about the process, however, I'm hoping, you know, we open up this discussion and then we could do something about it and help all children.
You wanna say that?
The chair has to acknowledge you.
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Judy. Now, if it shows up that one or two people are lying on their income verification, are they automatically disqualified and into the line again for being dishonest?
Well, I'm hoping there's no end of the line. I'm hoping we can accommodate all children.
Have they done everybody?
I don't know how, no, who's lying? How can you have them bring in their income tax?
W-2s, W-4s.
Can you do that?
Ten ninety-nine.
Make people bring that in?
Then let's redo the forms if it doesn't matter. Right? Just the history of the thing, the whole, the whole thing. It came out, apparently there was some will to have a pre-K program. So we said, "Let's investigate and see what we can do." I personally didn't think we were gonna be able to even pull it off for this year when we started this whole process. Do you all agree?
No, that's right.
Do some fortunate things that took place. We were able to actually, they told us when we started this process, this takes over a year to get this process in place, meaning to, you can get approved and all that stuff. Well, we were fortunate enough to have the head of the preschool program, the DOE, Department of Education, to come down and meet with us. The preschool committee was formed by, chaired by two people, Sylvia Emery, who's a kindergarten teacher, and Lisa DeWitt, who's the title one. And they said, "So what do we try to do? Investigate the possibility of opening a preschool. Design a program that would best fit Acton's needs. Determine what you want for a program, and then we'll figure out how we can try to get there." Okay? So that was the, that was the guidance that set the beginning of it. From that process, they, along with, oh, how many are...
At least fifteen people were on the committee.
Fifty people, so. And so we started this process. The state didn't even have their application form, and a new law just took an effect. Starting in 2015, any new pre-K program needs to follow certain guidelines, certain regulations. Existing pre-K programs can play, I'm gonna say it for lack of a better word, loosey-goosey. They could have part times, they could have this and that, they could do a variety of things. In 2017, all those schools will also have to comply with the 2015 regulations, okay? So when you hear about a preschool program, maybe that's been around in a while, they are following a different set of rules than what we have to follow, okay? The next thing we said is, alright, how can we try to get this done in one year? Because we recognize that we, I recognize that we had some funds in which we could make it happen with minimal impact on the taxes. In fact, our budget is essentially zero in order to pull this off. We were able to, in the process of doing this, ask the DOE, "Well, can we start putting out for an advertisement for the position? Because we'd like to get the best candidate sooner than later, instead of waiting until now and start publicizing." So we did that. And we were fortunate enough to get somebody that actually runs the pre-K program over at the University of Durham, New Hampshire, has about a hundred kids in that program. And their program starts early in the morning, goes to about 5:30 at night. She oversees the staff and so forth. She's accepted the position. At the same time that was taking place, our application finally came on board from the DOE. We get it, we go through it and work. And Child Development Services, and I'll talk, make sure I talk directly about your issue in a second. Child Development Services is, I think, who you're working with, right?
Correct.
The York head of that, a lady named Lisa Folk, came to help us write the application. The DOE also came to help fill out the application. In that process, the DOE didn't come, but they were on the phone. And they said, "We're only gonna approve a five-day, full-day program." I said, "That's not what we really want." Lisa was in the room, Sylvia was in the room, or Lisa stepped out and Sylvia was in the room. And they said, "Well, if that's all we can have, that's what we're gonna have. Let's have at least that." In that process, we said, "What's the best way to go about in selecting candidates?" Because at that time, we already knew we were of over twenty potentials. And talking with a lady named Susan Reed at the DOE, she said, "Income-based is usually the best approach first." And she recommended us follow Portland or South Portland's process. And so the form is essentially very similar to what South Portland or Portland uses. And it's as simple as circling like that, they don't go any further than that.
I guess I should have let it.
Well, no, no, hey, no, no. Listen, I didn't say this wasn't a flawed, potentially flawed process, but you understand, we did this in, like, that amount of time.
Well, you did it in this amount of time, but you should have done it right in this amount of time, right?
But it's our child. It's our child, so...
Excuse me. If we had taken a longer time, we would not have even had it this year at all, okay? So the DOE approved the five-day program, and it suggested we go through this process, like I said, with based on income. So we took their, those forms, and we made them say Acton and changed some things. We asked the question about verification. Part of the thing too is, students, you know what I mean by the free and reduced lunch program, you have to fill that out? There is a verification process there, which could take place, if that's the will of the group. Last, June 9th, which was last Tuesday, the school committee, you were sitting here, and they discussed that they were good with having it be an income-based first. The committee...
Well, I wasn't, but...
But the committee...
I don't know. I don't think everybody said yes to that.
Okay.
What committee are you talking about? The pre-K committee or the school committee?
School committee. School committee makes the final decision on that, on this stuff. So that's what took place. Now, specifically to address income verification, we could do something like what you said. We could, we did say that one of the parameters is have to be an Acton resident. There was rumor around there that there was some people from this and that that are gonna apply. No, can't be an Acton resident. The reason it was crunched like that is, we were getting pressure from parents that said, "I need to know if you're gonna have it so that I can, or if not, I gotta get my pre-K slot at the daycare." So, because they're doing their enrollment. So there was that pressure too. And we felt, "We better get this done now, or they're gonna be out in two places." Okay? So then, let me think.
Somebody's got another question to ask.
Yes.
So when you guys decided that you were gonna base this on income, and that, on how this was gonna go, is a pre-K committee. If you guys didn't bring it back to the pre-K committee, what is the point of having a pre-K committee? You guys got three people that represent fifteen, that's not a majority. There should have been nothing flying through, not even to get to the school board committee, unless it went through the pre-K committee first. What's the point of having it?
Pre-K committee were at the application process. The chair was at the application process. That's, they represent...
That's not the majority. To fill out the application, have everything go to the, to the parents and not go through the committee?
Anyway, we did not vote on it based on income. There's no vote.
So...
Unless I was sleeping.
The question of, if the question of income was on the paper, the whole committee would be honest.
You'll hear that there was a school member sitting right over there that said, in fact, two of them, I believe, over there that were sitting, that they felt that the income was the proper way to go about it.
So two out of five is the majority?
No.
So you took it and went with it?
No, there was never a vote. It was already done.
It was already done.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying. If there was no majority vote, then tell me why it happened.
Because we took...
You're the superintendent.
We took the lead of what the DOE recommended us to do.
Why have the committee?
Alright, I have another, I have another suggestion.
This is getting nowhere with what we need to...
This is not telling me the correct answer, sir.
Anyway, I wanna let you know that is, what is the, because maybe I just don't know, but we're gonna have one teacher for sixteen kids, and we can't have an ed tech and enter a few more kids in the system?
No. The regs are, it's an eight-to-one ratio, eight kids to one adult, of which, one has to be a teacher for the first eight, then an ed tech, anything down that, you gotta go to another teacher.
So you can't...
In order to do that, based on the regs right now, that would be another fifty-five probably to sixty thousand dollars.
No, I know how much it would be, but you couldn't hire someone part-time to take care of the part-timers.
I've asked that, and they said, "No, you have to hire another teacher."
A part-time teacher? I mean, a teacher.
Is there gonna be an attendance?
Pardon?
Is there gonna be an attendance? You know, say, so if we wanna send our daughter five days a week, and somebody that already got in is only gonna come one or two?
That was brought up today.
Like if somebody just snuck in?
Just brought up today. Somebody may say, "Well, you know, I'm just not gonna show up."
Exactly.
Well, there should be a rule about that. You can't just come and go as you please.
Absolutely.
You can't just say, "Well, I think I..."
That was just brought up today.
Well, you can...
So, and your situation was brought up today, or someone similar to you, a child under five years of age that may need some type of services, falls into the Child Development Services. And there's a thing called child finding, you have to go about, try to find those. One of the reasons we also wanted to start a pre-K was to try to find any student that may fall into that, so that at least they could get identified and get the services needed. Tricia, Ms. Bobin, the principal, told me today that she spoke to Lisa Folk about possibility offering it, having her be able to come here. And it sounds like that's maybe a possibility. So that's all I can say at that, at this point. And I think she was the one, it's either someone driving to York or somebody driving to Portland. I don't know which one.
Yeah, there's, there's a location in York which I can get into, so we were offered Portland. It's either York, Portland, or Saco.
Okay.
Because there's case holders.
Again, Lisa Folk, who's the child development, spoke with Tricia, and they said that they thought they might be able to work something out. So that might address your thing. It doesn't address the other people's situation when there's six kids that aren't, didn't make the, if you will, the draw.
Well, and my other concern is you say that, you know, there's this time crunch for parents to accept their slot at childcare, and I can speak for myself, I can't put my son in a preschool program. I can't afford it.
I understand that. I do. This is, it'd be great if we could just say, "Everybody, all the time, just work." Do you know how many students are in kindergarten this year, projecting?
Do they, do they have one classroom?
We started out at eight, well, this year, there's, well, it's over sixteen, it's like eighteen, nineteen, whatever. But this coming year, we initially thought we were only gonna have eight, now we have twelve. So any one year, this school system goes from what to what in your grades. You guys, it's like, you have boom, you have bust, boom, bust, boom, bust. That's very difficult to budget for, in terms of making sure you allocate for that. And that's why we ended up sixteen, okay? My druthers, my personal thing, when we started this whole thing, I wanted to see a two-day a week, every, like, a Monday, Thursday, or a Monday, Thursday, and a Tuesday, Friday, with a Wednesday for the teacher and the ed tech to plan and all it. Because I knew that that would serve possibly thirty-two kids. And we'd get slight funding back from the state, we would get them as if they were full-time students, even though they were only here half-time. That was the way I wanted to go, but that's not the way the committee went.
How come it wasn't an option or a consideration for Acton? Or I don't know if it was, to pair with Head Start?
Head Start, I thought just, didn't I just hear?
There's nothing to do with that.
There's nothing comparative.
No, there's nothing...
We, in fact, in the process, you had to go through and find partners. In this case, the pre-K, one was the two daycares. What was the other one? Child Development Services. There was a couple of different organizations in which you had to try to show that you're working out, working out, you know, relationships with them and trying to provide more services to more kids.
You know, there would be a way of being able to find out if the six that were chosen because of low income, have they applied for free and reduced lunch?
It's not...
If the thing doesn't match, then...
The six that didn't get picked, they might have kids that are older in school. There may not be...
Well, you can look at names, I mean, to see what, you know, I mean, it's like...
Yes, sir.
So sixteen kids have to be full-time, right, for the state to...
That's what the state has said this time. Now, I have, I have an email into her to see if we can change that. But that's what it is right now.
So we got two kids that now, one dropped out, two want part-time, they're gone. So the next three step up, right?
Well, why can't you offer four days? Say, four days a week, you know?
Because...
Well, they have no option. If they don't want a half-day, you have to have a half-day in the state. And what, you're gonna allow them?
Excuse me? I, no.
You said you had to be full-time, sixteen kids.
That's what the state has approved us for at this point.
Right.
And I have an email into the...
So these two kids that came forward to you and said, or parents that said...
No, they didn't come to me.
Well, they called, or whatever.
They made it known to the school.
Rumor.
They made it known to the school.
Okay. Well, what is the next step? Are they out? They have to be.
Well, right now, they've signed up for five days.
Now, does it have to be all the kids, five days?
The moment they signed up for five days.
This is so corrupt, it's not even funny.
Do the kids have to come every five days? Or can't you have some kids, you know, say, this group of kids comes Monday through, Monday through Thursday, these kids come Thursday through Friday, you know, rotate, so everyone is involved?
That's what I wanted to have originally, but at this point, that's not what the state approved.
The each kid has to come five days.
That's what they said. Now, I said I have an email into the lady, she was out on vacation this past week, asking specifically that. Is there a way for us to mix it? As long as we never have one of the sixteen kids in that space at one time, can we just manage that ourselves? That's basically the question to her at this point. So we'll get an answer from that, and then we'll go from there.
But in the meantime, we're not supposed to meet till August, and we have a graduation going on. Can we maybe continue this and have a regular school committee meeting in July? Or what do you want to do?
We will definitely schedule another meeting in July to try to come up with the answers, some of these answers that haven't been...
But in the meantime, are we all just kinda hanging in limbo, like?
Should we go to daycare for our kids?
No, no, no. You guys were so worried about getting this process done so fast for these working people.
Not for the working people.
There's nothing to do with that.
For the four-year-olds.
For the people needing other alternate, you know, their daycare. People are using this as a daycare, as a babysitter.
Jeez, I would hope not.
I see, well, my husband works.
Absolutely.
It is a babysitter.
If you want a four-year-old, how long can you...
You're gonna, you're gonna be able to teach maybe a good hour here, hour here, hour here, not even, but we all know preschool teachers.
No, this whole system is so, this is so wrong, because I have come every Tuesday and Thursday, have I not?
Yes.
And she loves it here, loves it.
Are you the lady I spoke to today?
Yes. And I am so upset with this, and I am the biggest supporter of kids learning, and this is wrong. No, no, no. This is wrong, just for the simple reason, you guys are providing low income first. I mean...
It was not supposed to be that way. I just want you to know, from my perspective, being on the meeting, every kid, okay?
I wasn't in favor of that either.
No, we never voted it.
They can already go to Barnyard daycare right up the street and get free.
For free, the state pays for it.
So you're rejecting the people that are working, that make a living, and you're giving it to these people that don't wanna work, where they can go get free daycare anywhere else.
I'm not in favor of that either. I don't think income should have had anything to do with it.
What my biggest thing is, is why did not my daughter, we were the first ones to pass in the application? I pointed to it, I said, "Tricia, does she get any bonus points for being every Tuesday and Thursday in BAM, this preschool program?"
It's, well...
Am I, am I, like, delusional? Like, should she have not got a little bit of credit for showing her support for this school? Because it looks like you guys turned around and like, "You're out."
Yeah, lottery.
Can I, can I, I really feel for what you guys are saying right now, and I can, I can see why you're upset by this. I can see it from a parent's point of view. I have two kids that come to this school, they're older. But I think that Judy is bringing up a good point, that we need to find out what your concerns are a little bit more. This was a good, because I'm hearing all this for the first time, so I wanna digest some information and talk with the board a little bit more, and just, so we can get back with a more unified answer.
But would you go and agree with me about being in that BAM program, that books art and music? Everybody in this town, Jen Goodwin's daughter, from where is she dating?
Oh, oh, Nicky Lynn, yes.
It's Sierra, my daughter, Amy Demer's son, Colin, and her daughter from another town, were the three top kids that were always here. It would just be like us three most days.
Well, then that would be biased too, if we took the kids in BAM, a low income, that would be biased.
But you're not giving to low-income, then somebody that's...
I know, we don't all agree. Something where...
Well, what's the curriculum? Say, say, what are you gonna do? What are you gonna do with the preschool kids, the sixteen kids? I mean, our daughter, she's just finishing kindergarten now, but she never went to a daycare or a preschool, well, she tried, but we had problems with that. Now, she comes to kindergarten, she's behind all the other kids that went to daycare and all this. So now we have our next daughter, who is not gonna get into the preschool program, and all these sixteen are. When she gets to kindergarten, these kids are already gonna have this structure, and then moving into kindergarten. This is where they're developing this. And now our daughter, and James's son, and Kelsey's son, they're going to be behind already, they're going to be behind the eight ball. And they're...
Do you guys recognize that I'm hearing all this? I totally get this. It's not, I'm trying... And I try, I'm pretty creative in coming up with solutions to things.
We need a solution.
How do this all go through?
I don't understand how this application...
How to get to my house without going through the committee?
It doesn't need to go through the committee for all of that paperwork.
Not even the school board committee, to nothing?
We don't need...
How many forms do you see?
No, we don't, we don't get into the minutia of that.
They don't.
Not the school committee.
I didn't do anything out of the normal business practice.
We have to do the toiletry, toiletry policy.
So one thing, tell me the reason why there's a pre-K committee. Tell me what you guys gained from having that.
Because in the application process, it says you must form a pre-K committee, determine your relationships to a variety of different, as Mary's nodding, variety of different, other resources that might be available that can become part of your program.
You know why they said that? So that you use it. You use that committee.
No.
You don't make it, not use it.
We used it right up until, when exactly... No, until we were filling out the application, right then, they were at the table. So...
Okay.
We have to continue.
We're hearing what you're saying, and we will work on it some more. That's all I can tell you. We've promised you to work on it some more. And it's definitely not a perfect system, and we'll do what we can do to fix the holes in it. But right now, we're going to have to end public discussion, because we have one other matter to take up, and we have a graduation in about ten minutes. Okay? Thank you, thank you very much for coming.
Will you guys make sure your phone numbers are on that?
Can I just say something? I'm just a grandma.
Find out something?
Just a grandma. There's no such thing as just a grandma.
I'm just a grandma. I also brought kids to BAM, and all year, they were told, you know, "Are you going to preschool?" So the kids are excited about preschool.
They think it's their school.
And we have a day... Yeah, every day we get to come here, Joseph says, "I'm at my school. I'm going to school next year." But I do know from being in town for a long time, I do know how hard it is to school for the kids. I do know that. But it's hard for the parents who...
Were kicked out.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, but what I'm wondering, too, is from, like, I know you're going to go on and meet in this, you know, try to continue the discussion, but what happens in the meantime? I mean, are we... Those kids are in that, that have been called no matter what? Or do they have to, like, verify the income? Do they have to decide they're going to come full-time or not at all?
I think they definitely should commit to...
That's correct.
They have to commit to the five days if they're not.
And if not, are they going to start calling these kids?
If they're not, right.
That's right. That's why there's a waitlist.
No, my thing is, I'm hoping to get all kids, all these little preschoolers in, because we're kicking the parents who are, who are going to be the most useful to us. The Reeds have always donated all their time, money, I mean, the Winchels, the Kittrages, they are the ones who are going to be the base of the school, the PTG. And you're kicking them before they even get in the school.
No, I'm not kicking it.